Can I have your attention, please? I'd like to bring the meeting to order. It's November 21st, 2011. This is a meeting of the North Reading School Committee. And on behalf of the school committee, I'd like to welcome all of you here. Thank you very, very much for coming. I think you're gonna find tonight's presentations very interesting. Tonight's agenda, just briefly, we're gonna have first our student report. We have tonight's seniors, Sarah Murray, who will be delivering that report. Immediately after that, for the next 30 minutes at about 7:10 to probably around 7:40, we're gonna have a presentation by the Secondary School Building Committee that I think you'll all be interested in. The superintendent's gonna say a few words, then we're gonna turn it over to Janine Embriano, who's the spokesperson for the Secondary School Building Committee. We also have Chuck Carucci here, who's the chairman as well of the Secondary School Building Committee. After that presentation, which is only gonna last about 10 to 15 minutes, we're then gonna answer questions until about 7:40, at which time the little school's gonna make their presentation. And then after that, anybody that stays will be glad to answer as many questions as you have before we finish the rest of our agenda. So I'd like to thank Ms. Molly for having us here tonight.
My pleasure.
We really appreciate it. And at this time, I'm gonna turn it over to Sarah Murray, our student representative, and Sarah's gonna deliver her report.
Okay. Well, at the high school right now, we're in the middle of our spirit week. Today was Western Day, and tomorrow's our Class Color Day, and Wednesday's pep rally. Today, after school, the seniors held a pizza party for the freshmen, and we made posters so we can decorate the gym tomorrow. And after pep rally on Wednesday is the girls' powder puff game, which starts at 11:30. It's between the junior and senior girls. Tickets are $7. And even though it's gonna rain, you should all come. It's gonna be awesome.
Are you playing, Sarah?
Of course.
Okay. Is that raining?
Yeah, it's gonna be damn boring. But whatever. So, the Thanksgiving game is on Thursday, 10:30. The football team is currently 6-3, so it should be really good. And this last Friday, we had a homecoming dance, and it was very successful, no problems. Winter sports start after Thanksgiving. And tomorrow night, the Model UN Club at the high school is hosting a movie night for anyone that wants to come, get some extra credit for history, and watch The Last Samurai. Right now, the parent conferences at the high school are happening. They begin at 6:30, and a lot of kids are there right now to get some community service hours. The chorus and band are starting their candy cane fundraiser December 1st, and they're also performing at the tree lighting ceremony on Sunday, which is the 22nd. Lastly, the AP World and AP Push class went on a field trip to Boston last Tuesday to the Museum of Fine Arts, and they got a lot of positive feedback. It was a really nice trip, and now I wish I took that class. But, oh, so for my student work, I was having trouble figuring out what to bring, but I finally found my Spanish project. I printed it out. We had to make an obituary for like anyone we wanted to celebrate the Day of the Dead. So this was a couple of weeks ago, El Dia de los Muertos, the Day of the Dead, and we had to write an obituary in Spanish of anyone we wanted, and we made an offering on the computer, like, yeah, an ofrenda. And I honestly didn't know who to pick, so I just went on the internet, and the first person I saw was Evel Knievel, so I had to do that on him. So, this is my offering, Evel Knievel, and truly, his masterpiece. So, if you just wanna like look at that.
And that's the obituary in Spanish?
Yeah, so you probably won't understand.
It would've been more cheerful if you did Cinco de Mayo, I think.
Right? Maybe we'll do that, but you know, it's an hologram, so that's what I have.
Thank you, Sarah.
You're welcome.
Any comments from the committee? Sarah, thank you very much. I know you probably have homework and stuff to do, so feel free to leave, okay?
Yes, you can keep that.
Thank you. Next on our agenda, again, is the presentation by the Secondary School Building Committee. I'm gonna ask the superintendent to make a few introductory remarks, and as soon as the superintendent's done, I'm gonna turn it over to Janine Embriano, and she is going to give the 10 or 15-minute presentation before we have questions and answers. So at this time, I'd introduce the superintendent, Catherine Willis.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to start by talking a little bit about some of the research that I've done regarding enrollments in the town of North Reading. And based on my research, the town of North Reading has acted responsibly when addressing the enrollment needs of the school district. When the enrollment was low, the town closed schools in response, and when the enrollment started to increase at the elementary schools, the town reopened schools, in fact reopened the little school in response to those increasing enrollments. So as far as the most recent building projects, they began with the little school in 1996, followed by the hood school, and then finally the Batch Elder School. And all of those projects were in response to increases in enrollment in the town of North Reading. So in the last 20 years, we have seen a 33% increase in enrollment across the district. And at the middle school, it's even higher. We've seen a 37% increase in enrollment. And finally, at the high school, we've seen an incredible 46% increase in enrollment in the last 20 years. But the good news is, the Massachusetts School Building Authority has partnered with the town of North Reading to be able to remedy that issue. And so tonight, the Secondary School Building Committee will give you more information about what that project entails. And Janine, I'd like to ask that you could come on down.
Yeah, I'll be right away.
Hi, and thank you again for coming out. My name's Janine Embriano. I've been on the board of the Secondary Schools Building Committee since 2005. It's made up of not only, you know, community members, but board of selectmen, school committee members, finance committee members, the superintendent principals as well. As the superintendent mentioned, we are in partnership with the MSBA, the Massachusetts School Building Authority, and we have discovered that the project that we're presenting tonight is the best option that we felt was for North Reading, is the most cost-effective. And it is a new high school with a combined core facility to be shared with the middle school, and the middle school will be renovated with an addition onto that. And this is an overview of where the site plan would look like. The idea behind it, there would be a three-phase project. We would construct the high school and the combined core facility. That should be done roughly in September 2014, at which point we would be able to move the high school students into the new high school, and then move the middle school students down into the old high school, thus allowing for the middle school to be renovated. And that renovation should take about a year, and would be complete around September 2015. Once the middle school was renovated, then the middle school students would move back up to the middle school, and the old high school would be taken down and put in its This is a little bit of a layout of how it would work out. The existing middle school is off in the upper left-hand corner. The orange, green, red, and yellow would be the combined core, consisting of the gymnasium in the orange, the cafeteria in the green, the auditorium in red, and the public, sorry, the media library room would be in the yellow. And then the high school would be a three-story complex, and that's what the three footprints across the bottom are. And this would be a view of what it would look like from the outside. The middle school being on your left, the high school combined core facility, what you see in the background. And this would be the view that you would see coming, kinda like from the batch area as you were to drive up towards the high school, you would see that. And that, the end part is the high school, the three levels. Our project is roughly about 270,000 square feet, and it's roughly, cost estimate is about 97 at this point. There are figures that haven't quite come to fruition in the, sorry, in the schematic phase design. They have, once that's complete, they have an estimator, and they go through all the cost and figures and everything, and that's when that phase is complete. In December, we'll have more firm cost. So right now, we're just in estimation. As I mentioned, we're in the schematic phase design, and that should be complete in December, at which point it goes to the MSBA, and they review it, and they come back to us with an official vote saying, yes, you know, go ahead, permit it to your town. That happens on January 25th. So we're hoping to call a special town meeting towards the end of January, and then a special town vote to fund the project in February. And if that all goes well, then we can begin construction after the close of school in 2012, and then hopefully the high school would be open September 2014, and the middle school finished renovating 2015. Just a little bit of how we got to here. As she had said, the enrollment has increased between 30 and 40%, depending on what school level that you're looking at. The high school was built in 1955, and when it was built, it was actually built as a junior high, high school to service 450 students. There was a little bit of renovation done to it in 1989, 1990, that was actually an addition of the library. And at that point, because the enrollment had grown to 540 students, to make rooms, what they did is they took normal-sized classrooms and cut them in half, thus allowing for more classrooms. So they didn't add space to it, they just made more classrooms. And they also put new windows in. The middle school was built in 1963. It was built as a seventh and eighth grade only, and today it houses the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. So obviously, with more students coming in, smaller classrooms, there's overcrowding. The classrooms are undersized. The programs continue to grow at the high school. They give an incredible academic, teaching, I can't think of the word, excuse me, but they don't have the room to put as many as they would like to add. The high school and middle school have both reached their maximum of the electric capacity. The school buildings are old, and the systems are not as efficient as they are, you know, could be today. The technology back in the 1950s and 60s has changed dramatically, and, you know, even with the age of computers, they didn't have computers back then, now we do. So just imagine how far the technology in heating and air conditioning has grown in that time. There are multiple code, fire safety, and ADA violations that exist in both the high school and the middle school. The high school has the sprinklers only in the old auto shop area, and there's no other sprinklers around that building, and there are no sprinklers in the middle school either. So those are just some of the code violations. Some of the pros for supporting this project would be, it takes us into the 21st learning environment for the students, you know, it does give them the ability to talk with students in the next town, in the next state, in the next country. It gives them language labs that we currently don't have. It brings up our building, you know, to the current state of the art, so that we're not running with old pipes and, you know, inefficient heating. The cost, as I mentioned, is a cost-effective and efficient design. It, a new high school can bring the values of our homes up. The interest rates are low right now, which is a good thing. Our bonding rate is high. The construction cost, because a lot of people out there, you know, wanting to work, would be a good time for bidding. And one of the things that I've thought is interesting, when you have a building project of this size in the town, it's going to bring in a lot of economic, it's too, like, you know, they're gonna have to go eat somewhere, so, you know, there's hornet's nest and riots right down the street. They might need some hardware and, you know, the local hardware store. So it does bring revenue into our, into our town as well. And then, one of the most important things is, the state is willing to give us 50%, you know, and that's our tax dollars that we've already paid. Why not bring it back to our town? You know, Wilmington's right, right up there, trying to get their vote for their high school too. So there's 317 projects, I believe, out with the MSBA right now. So if North Reading says, you know, sorry, we're just not gonna go with this project, some other town is definitely gonna get that money that should be coming to us. So it's a hard thing to turn that down. Why now? In going through the process, there's a feasibility study that is done. In finding that, that feasibility study, they look to see, can you recap the current buildings? And that's kinda what we're talking to on this first bullet. If we don't pass this project, there are certain things that need to be done. The code issues need to be taken care of, the deferred maintenance, you know, taking care of the septic, the HVACC, the oil boilers, all that kinda stuff. You can look to cost between 40 and 50 million, and that's just an estimate. We're still working on those hard figures as well. So, and that's something the state will not reimburse. That will be totally on our own. And even if you fix the buildings, you're still not addressing the overcrowding, you're not, you know, addressing the need of more classrooms. So we would still have those modular classrooms. There's 10 at the middle school right now, and there's eight at the high school, and they're only good for about 10 to 15 years, and some of them are, you know, halfway through their, their state of being good. So we would still have to address the overcrowding and, you know, replacement of the modulators. The tax increase would still happen, you know, 'cause we would still have to fix the schools. And the high school accreditation, right now, it's due to come back in 2014, where they review the school, and they have made notes that, you know, there's an overcrowding issue, that the class sizes are small, and there's a lack of science labs appropriate for a high school of our size. So those things would be viewed again if this project doesn't pass, you know. So it's not something that we can just, okay, we'll take care of it, you know, a couple of years, five years, 10 years, round down the road. It's something that definitely needs to be addressed. And with that, you know, if we try to peace fix it, so to speak, along the way, the state doesn't reimburse for that, they're, they're not gonna go, okay, we understand, you know, we'll try and help you out. They just, that's something that they don't do. So, for, that's kinda like the presentation, sorry. The future for other days that we'll be presenting will be with the school committees. They're crowding each school. In December, they'll be at the middle school and high, sorry, middle school, and then January at the high school. But most importantly, we are holding a community forum, and we're very excited about that. As, as we go along further in the schematic designs, we get to see a little bit more of the school, and we got a sneak peek of what the exterior's gonna look like, and that will be shown in much more detail on the 29th. And we'll also have the facts and figures at that point, so we'll know the impact that North Reading would take and the, and the amount that the state would be paying. So we're very excited for this forum, and we hope that you guys can come out and bring your friends and neighbors at that time as well.
Thank you, Janine. We have, I want to introduce Brad Dora, our architect, Lord Woody. Brad, why don't you come on out here? Because I think he has some questions. Brad will be helpful in answering those questions, and I think he also has some eye appearance to show as well. Any questions for Janine, for the school committee, or for Brad? Please raise your hand, you'll be heard. Comments? Questions? Yes, sir.
The MSBA makes a decision on January 25th. Will they vote it up or down, or will they suggest changes, and if so, will that do the whole timeline?
Brad?
Brad's right next to you.
Brad. Once the board makes their decision on the 25th, at that point in time, they will have gone and said, this is your effective reimbursement, this is how much, okay, the state will be willing to pay the town of North Reading to move forward with this project. At that point in time, the town has 120 days to be able to go through its process, to be able to do the appropriation, and do whatever is necessary to pick up the remaining portion of that project. So you have 120 days from once the MSBA goes and makes a decision to move forward with that project. After that 120-day window expires, then so does the MSBA offer to go and reimburse the project.
But to answer your question more thoroughly too, by the time they get to that vote, we will pretty much have worked with them so closely at that point that we'll have tweaked and come together as to all the changes that they might wanna make. So I think when they vote on that day, it's gonna be up or down. Yes, sir?
If you have a sense from people in town who are in favor, and you've had a few overrides the past few years that got shut down, this seems like a tremendous opportunity, you'd be real ashamed if it didn't go through. If you don't have a sense, what do you have the mind to give?
I think 99.9% of the people are gonna support it. I'm very optimistic, an optimistic person. No, we're getting positive feedback, we really are.
Introduce Jeff.
Jeff Simons is here. Jeff is going to be the, the public relations person for this project. He's already working on some things, and as soon as we get the go-ahead, Jeff's going to start a town-wide campaign on behalf of the project. But we've had some positive feedback. Again, this is, in my opinion, a once-in-a-generation opportunity. If we do not pass this within 120 days after the MSBA vote, then we're gonna lose the opportunity. The money, just like Janine said, is gonna go someplace else to some other community, because there's limited funds. The MSBA has limited funds. And right now, we're entitled, after very close scrutiny by the MSBA, we're gonna be entitled to approximately, in the vicinity of $45 million that they're gonna assist us with. Yes, ma'am?
I'm just wondering, one of the schools is gonna be turned down, one's gonna be renovated. Why would we renovate the middle school, not just make the high school the next middle school, make it larger, and has more ready to begin with?
The high school, in the opinion of the MSBA, and this is after careful scrutiny, this is not something we just threw out there, they looked at this very carefully, and their determination, all things being considered, was that the high school was a knock-down building. Knock it down. Anybody else? Mel?
Janine had mentioned, we really should bring our fair share of the taxes from the Commonwealth back to our town. In the past three weeks, Needham's approved a new middle school, Marshfield on Saturday approved a new high school, Conca Carlo a week ago approved a new high school.
Overwhelmingly.
Overwhelmingly. Conca Carlo spoke something like 80% in favor.
And that's about a $95 million project, I think.
If we don't do this, after all we've gone through, this, this committee's been in existence since 2006, I believe, in one form or another. We have addressed all of our elementary school problems, for the most part. We have enough room, we have good-sized classrooms, we are shoe-horning kids into our middle and high school, we have kids leaving the middle school after eighth grade at a higher rate than we'd like to go to private school because they don't want their kids to be in that high school. It's too small, it's old, it's got crappy science labs, we get kids in old auto shop for art classes and health classes, the locker rooms are a disgrace. The gym floor, we could probably fix one more time, or maybe, no, no, I think we fixed the gym floor for the last time. It's probably got about a half an inch of wood left on it because we've sanded it and finished it so many times. The gym floor's been used for 55 years, almost 60 years. If we don't do this, we're really sending a bad message to our kids. And, you know, Jerry mentioned, the MSBA worked with us, and we said, we don't think this building, the high school building, is feasible. It's got water all over the place, you can't build up, you can't add on, there's, there's nothing you can do with that building. And this will be, this is the most exciting project this town has ever attempted, and it will be a shame if we let this go by the boards and don't pass it.
Anybody else?
Can you talk about the YouTube video that was made, addressing some of the questions about the facilities at the high school, what they're in?
Janine, you wanna hear the letter? Or the video?
Is it on the video, or you want me to? No, it is on the video. I've seen it. Okay, just tell the...
John, John Braddock, come on up. John, do you wanna?
Talk to the audience about some video.
Sure. Helen Maynard, who was a lady on the board, and myself, went with Mr. Bernard and...
High school principal.
Yes. Through the high school, we toured the classrooms, the science labs, and went underneath the high school to see how it's constructed. And it's not a slab on concrete, if I'm saying it correctly, foundation, it's just dirt underneath. And where the high school's located on the slope, when it rains, the water runs downhill, and there's big, huge air breaks, so that it allows for air to flow underneath the high school. And when it rains, the water, the rain goes down the slope, and it goes into that air vent, and so you have a river, Bernard, underneath the high school, which, you know, can cause algae and mold build up, but, you know, Wayne does an incredible job keeping the school clean and dry and, you know, free of all that kinda stuff. But, you know, that, that's down there. All of the different wiring from 1955, all the technologies come in, it's all just kinda pieced together down there. The pipes leak from the steam, there's multiple patches on that. We toured the boys' locker room. The lockers are so old and rusty, they're all pulled out, so there's no, you know, at this point, lockers. So the bags are just all over the floor. The showers are atrocious. The girls' locker room is not much better, there's like two stalls for them to change, so, you know, they're just out there fighting, waiting to, you know, be the next one in. We walked into a classroom, and it was so small that these kids were literally like this, up against, you know, the wall or each other. The teachers had to walk, you know, kind of around chairs, because there's just not a lot of room. There's two science labs, and a school with the population that we have, there should be at least four. I believe there's 49 science classes that are run each day out of just those two rooms. So that's just the high school. In the, in the middle school, there's a storage room, and it's being used as a classroom. You know, there's access in the schools, it's safe, but it's there, it's in the auditorium ceiling, it's in the cafeteria at the middle school. I think, what else is on that video? There's a, in the high school, one of the science teachers, no, one of the teachers has a cart, 'cause she doesn't have her own classroom, and she has to take that cart to the three or four different classes throughout the day. And I had one of the parents coming up saying, you know, is that gonna be taken care of? And I said, you know, with the new school, yes, of course. And she said, wonderful, because my child can't find that teacher because she doesn't have her own classroom. So you either have to go wait for school to find them, or, you know, just hope that you hit or miss. So that was another thing that's in there.
Janine, this is in the video, John just went, but you wanna know how absurd the situation is, the high school. You can go through and find all, there's a million things, both schools. Couple of years ago, the Masquerade Musical, they decided to add, there was like three or four additional lights, because it was a show that required additional lighting. I'm there with my wife, the auditorium's filled the first night, they flick the lights on, the entire power for the high school goes down, and the kids...
An electrical service at the high school is a major issue. We're at maximum service right now.
The kids are practiced for three months, they're all standing there in the dark, the audience is in the dark, in those extremely comfortable chairs in our auditorium with the wooden backs. And we're all enjoying ourselves, having a great time, and it's always freezing in there, where's Wayne? But, you know, and, and thankfully, I think it was, I think it was Mr. Vedaro, they called him, he came in, donated service, somehow got the lights working again, and then he was on duty the next two or three shows to make sure that works. That's absurd. That's absurd that we're going through that. And those, those are the little vignettes that we have to tell you, and you have to tell others, because, because our kids just shouldn't be going to school in that kind of situation.
And I just wanna say that this project, again, so people understand, Janine had mentioned 300 and something projects, there's only about 24 or 25 projects right now that have been approved for reimbursement. We're one of them, okay? And the MSBA has been involved in this process now for, how long, Brad? Nine, nine months or so that we've been working with them. We got our foot in the door, and once we got our foot in the door, we kicked the door in, and we said, this is what we need, and they agreed with us. And it's not, it's not a rubber stamp. The MSBA has scrutinized every detail of this project, and believe me, we had not, we could not slip one thing in there. If anything, that there's no frills, it's gonna be an outstanding facility, there's no question about it. But it's not gonna be Newton North, it's not gonna be Lawrence, it's not gonna be swimming pools, it's not gonna be fieldhouses, it's gonna be the necessities, the things that we need to move forward in the 21st century. It's going to be the necessities, the things that we need to move forward in the 21st century. And it's going to be a great facility. But this opportunity is only going to come along once. There's no question in my mind. We don't even know if the MSBA will be in existence in two or three or four years. Certainly, we don't know if the funding's going to be there. So again, I don't think there's any question of the necessity. The MSBA has already said, they said that the high school was a knock-down project and that the middle school could be renovated. And that's what we're going to do. The core facilities make sense. The core facilities will serve both buildings scheduling-wise. There will not be interaction amongst the middle school and the high school students. But those core facilities, now, instead of having to build separate facilities for middle school, separate facilities for high school, they're going to service the entire secondary school. And obviously, those facilities are also going to be available for town use as well.
Jerry, I cut John off. I think you might add a little more about the high school.
I think a lot of good points were made. I think for me, the sum and substance of it all is that we're trying to educate students in the 21st century for a building that was built in the 1950s. And instead, I think on that video, I'm finding it increasingly difficult and concerned as we go forward, how challenging it's going to be to be able to maintain the level of education that we're providing students with the facility that we have. I think we do a very good job, but it's becoming more and more difficult when you're competing with water in the school that comes in from rain or, you know, classrooms that are converted auto shops with garage doors on them. You can't heat properly. Other water leaks in under them when it rains. But for the educational piece, those are kind of the infrastructure issues, but the educational piece, it's the science labs. We have two fully operational science labs in the school to service 702 students. Every student on the school takes a minimum of four years of science. So everyone passes through those lab results. Two is ridiculous. It just becomes, we were competing for that space and therefore, students aren't able to do as many labs as you would like them to do for the many lab sciences that we offer. Small classrooms, we, you know, Janine mentioned, and you saw in the video, classes where students are right up against each other because we have, you know, a very broad curriculum that we're trying to offer to students. But at the same time, when you have 25, 27, 28 students that are interested in a class that's about 650 square feet, it's tight. And it's not unusual to have that. Is it every single class in every single room like that? No. But it's not just one or two. It's not pockets of it. It's happening throughout the school on a daily basis. And I think just the web's whose comment about, you know, if we don't do this now, it's unfortunately, I think, sending a very sad message to our students who are very excited about this and see the possibilities for their education. You know, probably in the very short term, students aren't going to realize it at the high school level. But they're advocating for the younger brother or sister that they know could benefit from that. And I think that's commendable on their part, too.
Our current freshman class at the high school, if this proceeds as planned, will be the first graduating class. They'll enter in September 2014, and they'll graduate in September, in June of 2015, unless we make it a year-round, and they'll graduate September, year-round school.
And just one more comment without belaboring, but we have a whole wing of classrooms at the high school that I believe are 550 to 600 square feet.
Some are as little as 500.
550 square feet. The MSBA now requires between 850 and 900 square feet. Our science labs at the high school, a little bit over 800 square feet. The new science lab will be 1,400 square feet. So you can just see the dramatic difference. And not to be forgotten, again, and it was mentioned in the presentation, we have 18 modular classrooms that we've added on. We just keep adding on and adding on and adding on. Those modular classrooms have been installed, and we've got our money's worth out of them, and they'll probably be good for a few more years. But over time, those are going to have to be replaced as well. So again, these are the reasons why we're moving forward with this project. We are right on the doorstep. I mean, that vote by the MSBA is going to essentially give us the green light to go to the community, to go to you guys, and ask you to approve us. And that's why we're having these meetings. We want to get as much information out as possible. Yes, sir?
Yeah, on the way to the town, I assume that's going to be paid for with that financing?
Yes.
Do you have some sort of interest rate or return?
Yes, what we're looking at right now, eventually, if this is approved, the boardists elect that are entrusted with deciding how we're going to finance this. I don't want to give any hard numbers yet. You said 50 million, but, you know, we're going to know the numbers very, very soon. We're going to finance it by bonding. We're probably going to do it over 25 years, and it's probably going to be a flat rate. And the 4% to 5% category is what we're looking at for the bonds.
So 5% over 25 years?
Yes. It's going to be a fixed rate with a certain payment over that 25-year period. That way, it's spread out for everybody that's going to be using it to pay basically the same thing. Yes, yes, sir?
Do you have a sense of how they will pay taxes for everybody?
Well, again, it's, no, right now, it's not exact. We should have all the final numbers within a week, week from tomorrow, probably.
For the 29th?
By the 29th, when we have that form at the high school, we'll have all the, all the final costs, the reimbursement, what's being reimbursed, what's not being reimbursed. But obviously, it'll result in an increase in the tax rate. But we haven't got an exact figure right now. Yes?
Just to the gentleman's point who asked about override elections from the past, I've been involved with most, all of those, starting at this school right here about 15 years ago when the project started. And just to give you a sense of what's going to be required, we're probably, it's up to the selectmen, but we're probably looking around the first week of February, give or take, that we're looking at a town meeting vote, which has to pass by two-thirds because it involves bonding. And then a town-wide vote, which, from my experience of the probably eight or so overrides that we've been involved with, could take as many as 3,500 to 4,000 votes to pass. That's going to be very challenging and is going to require a lot of support, not just from people coming out, but between now and then, to build the support to get that kind of turnout. So to the gentleman's point, there will be a valid question committee forming as soon as the selectmen set that date. And there'll be opportunities for people who want to get involved to get involved and help promote the project.
Thank you, Jeff. Okay, I'm going to cut this shot right now. We will be glad to answer all questions or listen to any comments right after the little school presentation. But we know that Ms. Molly has scheduled that for 20 minutes of eight. So we're really looking forward to that. And then, again, after the little school presentation, we'll ask, we'll answer more questions before we move forward with the rest of our agenda.
Janine just wants to make a...
Janine?
To the point of the valid information or wanting to receive information or wanting to be that person to step up in your neighborhood and help out, I have a couple of sign-up sheets. If you would like to see an email with an update or if you would like to help, you can write your name, address, and email situation on a real good note to you. So if you could pass through.
We're going to put them up after the students.
After the presentation.
We should let people know that, so they'll stay the same. Jerry, you should let them know we're going to put the pictures up.
Yeah, folks, just for informational purposes, right after the little school presentation, we're going to put up all the boards for people to look at so you can come up and take a look at those pictures, okay?
There's going to be a presentation behind you, so two of you might...
Right now?
Right now.
No, I'm going to talk first.
Oh, you got to talk first. Oh, sorry.
Okay, Ms. Molly, we'll close yours.
Thank you so much. Welcome, school committee. It's always a pleasure to have you at the Little School. We look forward to your visit every year. I'm going to try to make this as short and sweet as possible. I know you have a lot of business to take care of, and we have some very anxious performers to get in here. I just want to let you know that in your folders, I provided you a number of different documents. One was the agenda for tonight and some interesting things that are happening at the Little School this year. I also gave you a copy of the updated little school calendar, the December calendar, and the most recent newsletter that went out just a couple of days ago. I also want to talk about what's happening at the Little School. And I'm sure you've heard, and if you haven't, you probably haven't spoken to Wayne lately. We have a new state-of-the-art heating system which is installed and fully operational. I have included in your packet actual four pictures of the new heating system and a little press release that hopefully will be going into the transcript in the next few weeks. We have three new state-of-the-art, I guess, boilers.
Condensing boilers.
What is it, Carl?
Condensing boilers.
Condensing boilers. And I've been told that one of them, and only one of them, is working at 20% capacity today. Obviously, that will go up as the weather gets colder. And just a few more things, which is also included in your brochure. We have 23 classes in the Little School this year, five half-day pre-k's district-wide, one full-day kindergarten, one half-day kindergarten, three of grades one through four, three classes of each, grades one through four, and four classes of grade five. This year, we were lucky enough to install four new smart boards for a total of 10 in the building, and we hope to continue to do so. Our hope is that at one of these meetings, we'll be able to have one of our teachers show you some fabulous things they're doing on the smart board. We also are piloting an iPad cart of 30 iPads in grade two. Some fabulous teaching and learning going on in the grade-two classroom because of the technology that we have put in place this year. Also new for this year is the Foundations Phonics Program, which has been adopted in grades K and 1, and next year will go to grade two. And all grades are using a new writing program called Write Trades. And we've been getting a lot of great feedback from the teachers where they have been experiencing a new and refreshing way to teach writing. And the kids are showing a lot of excitement for the program, a real desire to write and to improve. The Little School has always been very proud of the fact that we have a very active faculty and staff. And this year, our literacy committee consists of eight staff members who will be involved in creating different reading activities throughout the year. Our community outreach committee consists of 14 members of our staff. And I've listed some of the activities that we'll be doing during the year. Coats for Kids is going on right now. Soon, we'll be preparing for the food pantry, holiday baskets that we'll be putting together, the pajama drive, and so on. In October, which is National Bully Awareness Month, we had an assembly from Plymouth State College. They came and did quite a wonderful assembly about bullying and bystanders be aware. Captain Wallace was present that day and got to experience some of that. And it really was very well received by the faculty and the students. November is National Family Literacy Month, and the Reading Incentive Committee, the Literacy Committee, sent home a family reading calendar of different events for each day of the month that families could do together. For instance, read with your mittens on. Read while looking in the mirror, that kind of thing. So just to get the kids reading a little bit more in November. And we're hoping to see those calendars come back at the end of the month where children will be rewarded for their reading. We're very proud to say that Enrichment Express, which started out as our after-school program, but is actually now spilled over into the morning, so it's a before and after-school program, which I believe the coordinator, Mrs. Polito, is here tonight. Thank you for all you do, Mrs. Polito. The fall session was a big success. I believe we had 104 students participating with a variety of courses that included Lego robotics, baking, all kinds of different programs going on. And our winter session begins on January 17th, so we hope to see many of our students sign up for that. Some of the upcoming events that I know parents have been interested in because we've been getting a lot of phone calls in the front office. December 15th is our holiday program. Typically, in the past, we've always spread this over two days. But last year, I did a survey out to families, and some of the families were concerned that they were forced to take two days off from work or two mornings off from work to see their children perform. So this year, we're going to try to do it all in one day. And we'll have three sessions, including an evening session, which will be for our older students, grades four and five. On January 13th, our grade-four and five students will participate in the National Geographic Geography Bee. And on January, in the week of January 23rd to the 27th, is No Name Calling Week. And every day, we have a special day for our kids. I can't remember something that we did last year, but they were very well received. And the kids loved it. They begged to have it back again this year, so we'll be doing that again. In closing, before I show you a short little video that was created by a parent in the school, I just want to say a special thanks to a few people that are here tonight, the members of the Little School Improvement Council, members of the Little School PTO, the Little School faculty and staff who came tonight, and also the custodial staff who makes this evening possible. And to Mr. Mark Grant, who created the video that you're about to see. I had him shorten it down. It was a little bit long. We showed it at trivia night that just happened in November. He's cut it down to about 10 minutes. And also to Mr. Tetro and Mrs. Leslie Mazzoni, who every year just, you know, just astound us with what they do with the kids in chorus. And of course, all of the performers, 51 of them that will be here tonight to sing to you. And of course, all the parents who are very supportive of everything we do at the Little School. I just want to close by saying, I'm not sure how many people watch NCIS, but last Tuesday night, Gibbs, who's my favorite character, had one line in the show that really stuck with me. And he said, "In the United States, it is a privilege to teach children." And it is truly a privilege, and I am honored to be here, and I thank you all. So with that, I am going to start the video. It's quick, and I think you'll enjoy it. Hopefully, the technology will cooperate with me. And then we'll have our kids come down. Sorry. You have to start again. You have to start again.
Woke up this morning. I suddenly realized we're all in this together. I started smiling, 'cause you were smiling. And we're all in this together. I'm made of atoms, you're made of atoms. And we're all in this together. And love and vision just doesn't matter, 'cause we're all in this together. I saw you walking. We're all in this together. The city's changing, it's really changing. We're all in this together. Every twelve seconds, someone remembers that we're all in this together. In the kitchen of your friend-controlled apartment, we're all in this together. Come on, baby, I'll win the rush. I don't want to reach out and touch you. I've got to start to open my heart. I know you think about your mission before it sinks, but we are all in this together. As a scientist, it's quantum physics. We are all in this together. And on the subway, we face the same danger. We're all in this together. Yeah, I love you, and you love her, and she loves him. But we are all in this together. You know, baby, there's never been protection in all the history of human connection. Come on, darling, it's always a show to me. You don't ever need to be lonely once you start to open your heart. I saw you crying. I started crying. 'Cause we're all in this together. And religion is a big decision. Though we're all in this together. We are all in this together. We're all in this together. We're all in this together. We're all in this together. We are all in this together. We're all in this together. We're all in this together. We are all in this together. We are all in this together. We're all in this together. We are all in this together. We are all in this together.
That was well done. Very well done. Those kids deserve a new middle school, high school. I can tell you that.
All right, they all set.
They coming up yet? Okay, move. Come on up, kids.
You should probably move.
While the kids are setting up, now that you have the way to the iPad cart, your kids too can interrupt me at school for a second.
Although, it's not a free ride down.
No, it's not a free ride down.
I should mention that tonight, we have audience participation. And so we have a very special guest reader tonight. Ari Venizia will be reading.
Tell her you want her.
We'll point to you.
A little over a hundred years ago, in eighteen ninety-seven, a young girl from the Upper West Side of Manhattan wrote a letter to the editor of the New York Sun, one of New York City's newspapers at the time. She wrote, "Dear editor, I am eight years old. Some of my little friends say there is no Santa Claus. Papa says if you see the sun, it's so. Please tell me the truth. Is there a Santa Claus? Virginia O'Hallan, 115 West Ninety-Fifth Street." Now that the letter wound up on a desk of a newspaper man named Frank Church, this is what he replied in print in the paper that year.
Virginia, your little friends are wrong. They have been affected by the skepticism of a skeptical age. They do not believe except what they see. They think that nothing can be which is not comprehensible by their little minds. All minds, Virginia, whether they be men or children, are little. And this great universe of ours means a mere insect, an ant, and his intellect is compared with the boundless world about him as measured by the intelligence capable of grasping the whole of truth and knowledge. Yes, Virginia, there is a Santa Claus. He exists as certainly as love and generosity and devotion exist. And you know that they abound and give to your life its highest beauty and joy. Alas, how dreary would be the world if there was no Santa Claus. It would be as dreary as if there were no Virginias. There'd be no childlike faith then, no poetry, no romance to make tolerable this existence. We should have no enjoyment except in sense and sight. The eternal light, which childhood fills the world, would be extinguished. Not believing in Santa Claus, you might as well not believe in fairies. You might get your Papa to high event to watch in all the chimneys on Christmas Eve to catch Santa Claus. But even if they did not see Santa Claus coming down, what would that prove? Nobody sees Santa Claus, but that is no sign that there is no Santa Claus. The most real things in the world are those that neither children nor men conceive. Did you ever see fairies dancing on the lawn? Of course not. But that's no proof that they are not there. Nobody can conceive or imagine all the wonders. There are unseen and unseeable in the world. You may terrapot the baby's rattle and see what makes the noise inside, but there is a veil covering the unseen world which not the strongest man, or even the united strength of all the strongest men that ever lived, could terrapet. Only faith, fancy, poetry, love, romance can push aside that curtain and view and picture the supernova beauty and glory beyond. Is it all real? Ah, Virginia, in all this world, there's nothing else real to abide in. No Santa Claus? Thank God. He lives, and he lives forever. A thousand years from now, Virginia, nay, ten times ten thousand years from now, he will continue to make glad the high of childhood.
Seeing is believing. That's what most people swear. But look into your heart and find the hidden wonders there. For no matter what your friends may say, elves and leopards and reindeer play, where gift-rabbed dreams come true on Christmas Day.
Yes, Virginia, there's a Santa Claus. He's as real as hope and love. Look around and you'll find Santa Claus in the boundless world you're dreaming of, even though you may not see him on his sleigh on Christmas Eve. Yes, Virginia, there's a Santa Claus. It's true if you believe. Seeing is believing, but you can't just use your eyes. The hearts exhaled of fantasy that comfort and surprise. Oh, this world would be a dreary place devoid of beauty, charm, or grace if we forget the warmth of his embrace. Yes, Virginia, there's a Santa Claus. He's as real as hope and love. Look around and you'll find Santa Claus in the boundless world you're dreaming of, even though you may not see him on his sleigh on Christmas Eve. Yes, Virginia, there's a Santa Claus. It's true if you believe. Oh, believe in joy, believe in love. Believe your whole life through. Keep pride alive of childhood. Let the seasons live in you, in you. Yes, Virginia, there's a Santa Claus. He's as real as hope and love. Look around and you'll find Santa Claus in the boundless world you're dreaming of, even though you may not see him on his sleigh on Christmas Eve. Yes, Virginia, there's a Santa Claus. It's true if you believe.
Yes, Virginia, there's a Santa Claus. It's true if you believe.
So that gets off our holiday season. Thank you all for coming. I wish you a happy Thanksgiving. Nice time to reflect on everything we have to be thankful for. Enjoy your time with your family, and thank you for coming tonight.
So one fourth.
Yes, Virginia, there is a Santa Claus. Next job.
Chris, thank you.
Happy Christmas.
Thank you for supporting us.
Thank you.
There is a Santa Claus.
No. Thank you very much.
Okay.
We have to put my things together. Sorry.
Kathy, you want to give your report on the MSBA update?
Yes, I do. Thank you very much.
Superintendent's going to give a report on the MSBA SSBC update.
Thank you. The last SSBC meeting was held on Tuesday, November 15th. The central office has a location now, and it will be located in the renovated middle school where the current large group room is currently. On Monday, November 7th, the subcommittee of the SSBC met to discuss capital improvements to the middle and the high school. If the project does not pass, you heard some of that information this evening. This information will continue to be included in future presentations. On Tuesday, November 15th, the OPM, Carl Nelson, Wayne Hardaker, Kathy O'Connell, and I walked the site at the back of the middle school to review relocation of the modular classrooms as the first step in the phasing process. If the project is passed, the mods will be relocated for the start of the 2012-13 school year. And the first middle school-high school building project informational forum is scheduled for Tuesday, November 29th, beginning at 7:00 p.m. in the high school auditorium. A banner announcing this forum is now displayed on the fence near the Batch Elder School. So the time, the location, the place, it's all there in case you forget. The SSBC chair is going to be convening a meeting very soon of specific individuals to address gymnasium space for town-wide youth sports. And our architects, Doran Whittier, will create a basic design for a locker room bathroom facility by the turf field as an alternate cost to the project. A meeting between the architects, the OPM, the town administrator, and the town department heads is now scheduled that the schematic designs are complete. That meeting will take place on November 30th at 11:00 a.m., and they'll be talking about HVAC, they'll be talking about traffic flow, wastewater treatment. So all of those topics that we've been discussing at the SSBC will be discussed with the department heads on November 30th at 11:00 a.m. in the town hall. At our last SSBC meeting, our architects made a design presentation of the project using the new boards that detailed the interior layout and the exterior design. Some of those were displayed this evening. What was really quite interesting was a web-based three-dimensional rendering of the building project that was shared with the committee. That will also be aired at the November 29th informational forum. And that's very exciting. It really brings the project to life. The submission date for the schematic design documents to the MSBA is December 9th, 2012. That's the deadline for all of this work to be done. So the next meeting of the SSBC is scheduled for Monday, November 28th, from 3:00 in the afternoon till 5:00 p.m. in the high school modular cafeteria.
Any questions or comments on the superintendent's report? Okay. Moving on, next on the agenda, we do have a couple of policies that are being reviewed for first reading. And because they're relatively short, I'm going to read them. First policy is JBB. That's admission to kindergarten in first grade. And again, this will be first reading and discussion. Early admission, I'm sorry. In order to be eligible to enter kindergarten, a child must be five years old on or before August 31st of the year he or she enrolls. Correspondingly, a child must be six years old on or before August 31st in order to enter first grade. Early admission to kindergarten is never allowed. A request for early admission to first grade will be considered only for a child who moves to North Reading after having completed kindergarten in a school system having a different entrance age. When this occurs, the parent may request a readiness evaluation by the North Reading People's Services Department. The final decision on admission to first grade will be made by the superintendent of schools. Fact is to be considered by the superintendent will include results of the evaluation and the effect the early admission will have on class size. Any comments on that?
I can comment briefly. We've had a kind of a rolling time period. It's very uncertain. And the policy committee concluded that we really ought to have a single date that is firm so that parents and students can prepare well in advance. They know when the date's certain that they can start school.
Yeah, that's a good point, Cliff.
The women of the committee are the women who restart.
I think the existing policy provides that whatever the first day of school is, you have to obtain those ages by that day. And of course, the first day of school changes pretty much every year.
It's a homing date, so you don't know from year to year.
We actually, we had a long discussion. I think there are the only two members on the board who would change this about six years ago. And it went back and forth for several meetings.
There's a split vote, too.
Right, I think it was three to two vote, or four to one. I think at the time, I know I voted in favor because there were some good arguments made as to holding a kid back who misses by one day, that kid will be seven years old basically entering first grade if the kid misses by one day. I guess my question is, I don't understand what the difficulty is of having it be a rolling date. I can say that to the superintendent, then.
Sure. I did an analysis of the entrance dates for all of the school districts across the state. And 230 out of 350 have either September 1st or August 31st as a school entrance date. Even when you have the first day of school as the date certain, somebody will always turn that next age the next day. So you're always going to have that deadline. And that changes from one year to the next. So if school opens on September 4th, that becomes your day when you need to turn five or be five years old. If it's September 8th the next year, it's a different date, and therefore, you're turning five four days later than maybe the year before. So in concert with what most districts are doing across the state, and to be able to answer parents' phone calls when they're calling now before our calendar is voted for the next school year, we would be able to now give an answer to parents saying, "Your child needs to be five as of August 31st or September 1st." We chose August 31st.
Okay, any other comments? Not to nitpick, Kathy, but obviously for kindergarten child transfer here in the middle of the year, it'd be a lot to continue in kindergarten even if they had a birthday that was...
That's correct. We would require some documentation from the sending kindergarten if they had a different entrance policy than we did. But if they had been in since the beginning of the school year, we would continue.
Okay, we have a second. But again, this is the first reading. We have a second policy.
We need to approve it. I'll make a motion to approve the first reading of the new admission to kindergarten in first grade policy.
Motion by Mel, second by Cliff to approve.
Policy JBB.
JBB to approve. Any further discussion? Hearing on all's in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, none. Motion carried by a vote of four to none. Second policy is something that's very current. It's JGK. And it's a sports-related head injury concussion policy. Sports-related head injuries and concussions can have serious consequences for students, including long-term health and educational issues if they're not properly managed. Early recognition of a concussion is essential to maximize safe management. The North Reading School District is committed to promote the safety and well-being of our students. As part of this commitment, we fully support the Massachusetts General Law and the Department of Public Health regulations regarding procedures pertaining to sports-related head injuries occurring in extracurricular athletic activities. All persons as specified in Department of Public Health 105 Code of Massachusetts Regulations 201.008 shall be required to annually participate in mandatory prevention and recognition of sports-related head injury training program approved by the Department of Public Health. Participation requirements for athletes and parent guardians are as stated in Department of Public Health 105 Code of Massachusetts Regulations 201.009. Superintendent shall designate the athletic director as the person responsible for the implementation of these policies and protocols. For the purpose of this policy, these definitions are part of the policy. Extracurricular athletic activities. An organized, school-sponsored athletic activity generally occurring outside of school instructional hours under the direction of a coach, athletic director, or bandleader. Athlete, defined as a student who prepares for or participates in an extracurricular athletic activity. Copies of the proposed regulations, again, 105 CMR 201, are available in all nurses' offices within the district as well as through the athletic director. These proposed regulations can also be downloaded directly from the Massachusetts Athletic Association website And again, there is a memo here from Mike Gilbert, Director of the Mass Association School Committees, clarifying some of the issues dealing with the concussion issue. Kathy, do you want to elaborate at all on that?
Sure. Each school district in the Commonwealth must create a concussion policy by January 1st, 2012 to align with the DPH regulations that became effective last June, 2011. The policy subcommittee of the North Reading School Committee was waiting for the Massachusetts Association of School Committees sample policy to guide this process. But unfortunately, the sample's not ready at this time, and time is growing short. So we would like to adopt this particular policy at this time. We also have until March 1st of 2012, should we want to create a different policy once MASC has released their sample, if it's not in concert with what's being proposed this evening. So we do have a window of opportunity.
Cliff, any comments, or Mel?
Only this. You know, this is an interim policy, but we're attempting to meet the two readings before the 1st of January, which is required by law, even though no one has any official policy guidelines to work from.
Mel? Why am I thinking that we had a policy already?
We have guidelines that have been included in handbooks, but the school committee didn't...
We certainly went over something, and it must have been the guidelines.
Okay, because I looked for a policy in the policy manual that we have, and I did not find one.
But we did certainly...
I know we spent a lot of time on this. We did.
But I think Kathy's right. I think that was...
I just want to make sure we're not approving a policy that we already have.
Well, we can approve this at first reading. And if that's the case, then we won't have a second reading.
But you didn't find one, right?
I didn't find one. I can search again.
Well, let's go forward to the motion to approve.
Can I just say something?
Karen, yeah, sure.
So I really don't support having piecemeal policies based on conditions. I really think our policy should be very general in support of a variety of circumstances which can arise related to injury. This is a very specific injury and requires to... I'm happy to support it. But I would like to just note that the fourth sentence of the first paragraph, "we fully support" is an endorsement of a regulation which is not appropriate. We should say, "we comply" as opposed to "we fully support", because those regulations could be a moving target.
Anybody have a reaction to that? They can remember, as Karen stated, "we comply" with the Massachusetts General Law and the Department of Public Health.
I think I have one other question. And this kind of gets to, I think it's to some of what Karen was talking about. Why, so if someone gets a concussion doing the musical, it's not covered under this? I don't understand why it's only sports-related.
That's what my concern is.
Yeah, why isn't it school-related?
This is not just generally around injury. This is, again, a knee-jerk reaction, in my view, in public health of addressing conditions that are a hot topic of the month.
Right.
It could be dental or whatever it is.
But that's why I'm saying...
Well, it's a hot topic nationwide.
No, but I agree with Karen. If someone gets hurt, for example, last year in the Barnum musical, we had kids... Remember some of the things those kids were doing? That's not covered by this policy. And I don't understand. It's not, I'm not blaming the policy subcommittee. I'm just saying it should be, I agree with Karen, it should be more comprehensive. Now, we can approve this tonight, but...
And look at addressing a more comprehensive policy? Is that what you want to direction to go?
I just think that we, because, in the North Reading grade point of Barnum, we have students participating in a number of extracurricular activities where they could be exposed to potential injury just by nature of doing the activity.
Never mind, singing in the rain where the actresses took her hat off.
True, true. So some of this is liability issues, which is not related. But this is about sports injuries, and I do agree with the regulations. I think that it's important to address this because kids, there's this norm of, you know, having a concussion is sort of a badge of honor and just as part of sports. That's crap. So I completely agree where this is coming from. However, it's not comprehensive enough to address kids who'd be in a variety of circumstances where they could be injured on school property, and that concerns me. So I think this is a good Band-Aid for now. Maybe we can take it up with another session.
I think this is sort of intended to be a Band-Aid to cover us for a requirement that doesn't make any sense to have a requirement before you have a guideline. You know, that just doesn't make any sense. But we're going to comply by going there.
Okay, maybe we can put this on the agenda for the policy subcommittee to look at a more broad...
Yeah, I agree. But as such, I'll make a motion to approve it, the first reading of this policy.
With the slight amendment that Karen suggested.
With the compliance of the policy JGK.
Motion by Karen.
Second.
Second by Mel. Any further discussion? Hearing on all's in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, none. Kathy, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Did you put that poster up there just to aggravate me or...
Hatred.
I don't have that kind of authority.
Is that up there for a reason? All right. Moving right along. Next on the agenda is the superintendent's goals. And as people might or might not remember, we had put together an evaluation tool. And as part of that tool, we had identified six categories in which school committee members rank the superintendent's performance. And those categories were exceeds expectations, meets expectations, or does not meet expectations. And those categories, for the purpose of doing the evaluation, became the superintendent's goals for the current school year. And we set it up, I believe, that were five or six, six related areas, including relationship with the school committee, educational leadership, public relations, personnel and human resources, financial management, and leadership qualities. And the superintendent has highlighted in relationship to those goals bullet points for tasks that she needs to perform and how she's going to perform that with some planned action. So Kathy, I'm sure you're set just where this is.
I'd like to read every one of them, Jerry. No one. I'm only kidding.
Someone take his iPad from him.
No, but Kathy, it takes some time, though, if you wanted to comment on it. It's very ambitious. I mean, even though we have six particular areas that we're going to evaluate the superintendent on, each of those areas requires significant commitment by the superintendent, and it's a lot of, under the planned action, there's a lot of action elements that she has to do in order to comply with those goals.
Well, again, as you had mentioned, this is a different format from what I had presented to you last year. And that's in direct response to the supervision...
She's going to need a 56 out of 52 to even get an A.
But I'm going to give her 54, I think, if she agrees with me. Under relationship with the school committee, we had discussed working on a new school committee member orientation program.
Yes.
And I'm wondering if that should be under there, 53?
Thank you.
And then under, I think I had three, but I can't remember the other one because I don't have paper and I can't write on the screen and...
I'll throw away that.
I know. Under personnel and human resources?
Yes.
We had discussed looking into hiring a human resources slash professional for the school department. Is it there? Oh, never mind. I only added one for you. I can't read the small type on my iPad. Karen had that circled, by the way. So I think that's it. I think those two are the only two things that I thought should be added, but one's already there, so that's all.
Michael couldn't be here this evening, but I had asked to provide feedback to me so that I could address it this evening at this meeting. And he did indicate that we had to make sure that contract negotiations with the North Reading Educators Association was on here. And it is D, number two. And the other item that he thought I should make sure I address is the work of the SSBC, and that is C, number three. So I just want to make sure that it's known and it's there.
I remember the other one. Educator, I think it goes under educator and leadership. And maybe I missed this, too, because this had the most, it had 15 items under it. Do you address continuing to work to implement the new core curriculum? Is that here? The new state core?
The Common Core.
Yeah. I don't know if it needs to be here. I don't know if it is on here, but it's obviously something that you're going to be required to take a leadership role on.
Yes.
So I think that was the other, that was the other one.
Explicitly mention the Common Core. I did not explicitly, it was inherent in the strategic planning process, but I will...
I'd like to just see it.
Put that under educational leadership?
Yes.
That's it.
Okay, any other, any other comments?
I have my...
Cliff?
This is not necessarily a comprehensive, right?
No, it's not. These are just the highlights.
He's really a... I couldn't help myself, thanks.
It's ambitious.
Obviously, if there's something outside of these, you will take care of it.
I, yes, I will.
Actually, we may have to scale your grade.
I know. It's not... We're top graders, I'm telling you. By the end of the year, you'll find out.
That's okay.
The only thing I would mention about this is while it's comprehensive, I wanted to be very realistic in providing feedback to you. If you did half of this, I'd be very happy. This is a lot to do and it requires utilizing a lot of other people to get it done. So some of these I sort of see as essential, others I see as nice to have if you have the time and get the support you need. And some of that's dependent on the school committee. So we need to be actively partnering with her to get it done.
Well, and again, I'll say this, I've said it before, that superintendent stepped into, right at the start of her super tenure, the school building project. And it's taken a tremendous amount of time and effort. So that's something we absolutely have to take into consideration and I think it's going to be intense, at least certainly for the next year, so. All right, if there's no further comments on the goals...
Do you want to approve these or...
I don't...
Well, what I did last time was you had made some recommendations for edits and I brought it back for a vote, but if you want to vote it tonight with the edits...
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve with the suggested edits made tonight by many members.
Second? Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, with motion by Mel, second by Karen to approve the goals as presented with amendments. Any further discussion? Hearing not all is in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, none. Motion carries by a vote of four to nothing. Bills and perils, do we have three signatures on everything, Karen? Minutes, we do not have any minutes to approve tonight. We have no budget update, no staffing changes. However, we have a very generous gift and I'll just mention it and Kathy can say a few words about it. But we have a gift for two new iPads by Mike Larkin to the North Reading School District for the benefit of a substantially separate PDD program at the J. Turner Hood School. And I know Mr. Larkin doesn't even live in North Reading any longer, but Kathy, do you want to comment?
Yes. Mr. Larkin currently lives in PDD, however, he's a former longtime resident of North Reading whose children went through the North Reading Public School System. And what he had done was viewed the 60 Minutes episode that highlighted the use of iPad 2s with autistic students. And he was quite excited about the potential educational benefit so that he wanted to see if this was something that we were interested in. Of course, we are, and we are currently using some iPads in our autistic PDD program. So he was able to provide this to us and we will be able to expand our programming for our students to enhance their ability to communicate.
Well, we're very grateful, Mr. Larkin. I know the Larkin family, that's very, very generous of them. I'd ask for a motion to accept with gratitude.
So...
Okay, we have a tie between Karen and Cliff on the motion. To break that tie, should we...
Just have Mel second.
Okay, Mel second?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion by Karen, a second by Mel. So it's set with gratitude for two new iPads from the Larkin family. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, none. Motion carries by a vote of four to nothing. We have subcommittee updates. The policy subcommittee met on November 16th. Cliff, are you going to deliver your report?
Well, we've already covered two of the items that we went over in our, in our meeting. The third item was related to our run-through of the entire policy.
I'm going to review it.
And we're in a current holdup on that related to policy DJDJ, which is the payment procedures.
I thought that was a rep.
And we're reviewing our due diligence on that item to make sure that we are consistent with all the regulations, laws, charges.
Yeah. I thought it was Dennis Johnson, Nettie Johnson, former NBA player, DJDJ. I was confused, but it makes sense.
Cliff, that's a lot of work. I mean, that policy subcommittee, I remember sitting at the first and second committee and it's enough to make you not run for election, but it is a lot of work.
He's supportive.
Yeah. He is, that's why he's supportive, Karen.
So he doesn't have to do it.
Right.
We canceled the evaluation subcommittee due to a conflict with the SSBC meeting and the athletics subcommittee canceled and rescheduled for Tuesday, November, I'm sorry. We canceled November 15th, we rescheduled for December.
Right, we didn't really have any items on the agenda, winding down of the fall sports seasons, which I will mention, this is quite a successful, we had four of our sports, fall sports teams made state tournament. And the football team is having the most successful season I can remember in a long time. And we have a huge game on Thanksgiving Day. Everybody must come.
Rain or shine. Rain or shine.
We must defeat Litfield. Right. And you will see Jerry and I will be the chain gang for the Powderpuff game on Wednesday in the rain. We'll be holding the chains, measuring for first downs, et cetera, because that's the kind of guys that we are.
Classy.
Okay. Does the superintendent have any administrative report that she wants to make?
Not this evening.
Any correspondence?
Not this evening.
That's great.
Under penalty of detention.
She's learning. Future business, we have meetings scheduled, Monday, December 5th at 7:00. That's at the middle school, it's a regular meeting. December 19th at 7:00, that's going to be at the Hood School. We can only hope that we have a turnout as good as we had tonight. And then the January 9th meeting is at 7:00 and that's going to be at the high school, same thing. We'd like to get as big a turnout as we can so that we can get the message out on the secondary school building project and plus we don't want Janine to have more than one night a week at home, so.
And don't forget November 29th, the public presentation.
Public, yeah, the public presentation, November 29th, 7:00 p.m. at the high school auditorium.
We'd like to fill it.
We would. Anything else, anybody else? Kathy, you have?
I have nothing.
Take motion to adjourn.
So Karen had that.
That goes clear to you. Okay, do we have a second? Motion by Karen, a second by Mel to adjourn. All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed?
It'll be Thanksgiving.
It's Thanksgiving. All right.
Good meeting.